Call to May 16th, the Broken Arrow City Council Meeting to Order. For invocation, we have Scott Moore.
We're thankful for those who were gathered to give their time and their energy to leading our community. Father, we also come asking that you would give us guidance and wisdom as agenda items are considered and discussed through this meeting. Help us to engage in meaningful discussion, allow us to make decisions that nurture the bonds of community. Help us to make decisions that continue to enhance the quality of life that we enjoy in Broken Arrow. Guide our hearts and our minds in the spirit of fairness, right thought and speech, and impact your supreme wisdom upon our activities so that our efforts may result in successful conclusions. Thank you, Lord, for being the source of our guidance today. In your name we pray. Amen.
Amen.
Scott. Next, we have roll call.
Here.
Parks?
Here.
Lester?
Here.
Udi?
Here.
Thurman?
Here.
Please stand and join Councilman Lester in the pledge.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Our next item is Public Hearings Appeals Presentations Recognitions and Awards. An item 5A is Presentation Discussion of Agenda for Public Meetings Including Process Used by City Administration to Prepare City Council Broken Arrow Municipal Authority and Broken Arrow Economic Development Authority Agenda. How the process works, transparency and explanation of the process for review and approval.
Mr. Spurgeon.
Thank you, Mayor and Members of Council. Good evening. We did change the agenda up a little bit this evening to show a video regarding how our agenda is actually prepared. And what I'd like to start off by saying is that, you know, with today's technology, I think it's a great opportunity about once a year or so for us to take a little bit of time and step back and use this technology to let people that might be tuning in for the first time, you know, there's a lot of folks that go about their lives that really don't pay a whole lot of attention on what goes in on City Hall. And then there's those that pretty much pay attention on a regular basis. And I think if we take the opportunity every now and then to explain what our agenda is and how it's put together, I think it would be helpful to other folks in our community on learning this process. So what I have is a, just a short five-minute video that we prepared last year. And after this video, I'd like to just give a short PowerPoint presentation that explains how the agenda is prepared. So if we go ahead, John.
Hi, folks. I'm Broken Arrow City Manager Michael Spurgeon. It's another beautiful day in the city of Broken Arrow. Today, we're going to be talking about the city council meetings and the agendas. And as I've been mentioning, our city council meets every first and third Tuesday of each month. And today, we're going to be talking more about the agendas and what the agendas consist of. First, a little bit about why we have city council meetings. The city council is a governing body that creates new laws, authorizes city projects, and determines where our public dollars are spent. That's why attending city council meetings are the most important transparent way for you to know what's going on in your city and community. What you're seeing here is the city council chambers. It's in City Hall across from the One Stop Center. Up front is the dais, and this is where our city council members sit. You'll also see our city clerk, city attorney, and myself sitting on this row as well. You can follow along in the meetings by looking at the agenda. It's a simple document that looks like this, which is available at the meeting as well as on our website. We try to post the agenda every Friday before the upcoming meeting. Our city council meetings are at 6:30 on the first and third Tuesdays of each month. In June, because we have Tuesdays in the park, we move them to the first and third Mondays, respectively. Looking at the agenda, the first four sections are standard practice. Section five is our consent agenda. The consent items are voted on all in one motion and include regular day-to-day business like street repairs, contract renewals, and approval of last meeting's minutes. Sometimes, a council member will pull an item from consent, so section six allows council members to discuss the item pulled and vote on it individually. Section seven is for public hearings, presentations, and recognitions. This is the section where we initially presented our budget for the fiscal year, and then we held the public hearing on it. Other organizations also do presentations. For example, the Tulsa City County Library shared information about their summer reading program. It's also an opportunity to recognize outstanding individuals like our employees. For example, Officer Mark Baldwin and his K-9 JIRA for winning a national award. Section eight allows our citizens to talk to the council about things that are important to them. If you want to speak in front of the council, you will need to fill out a request to speak form before the meeting, and at this portion of the meeting, you will be called to the front to address council. You get three minutes to talk about anything related to the city operations or within the community. Next, we have the general council business section. These are items we want council to give more attention to before we make a decision. These are also items that the public may want to address the council on. This section would include tort claims and projects that involve a significant amount of funding. Sections 10 and 11 have to do with our ordinances. Ordinances are actual laws that will be enforced, so this will include anything you can be fined for, jailed, or have civil action brought against you. It also includes annexation, because ordinances dictate the city limits. Ordinances have to be previewed before they are approved, so section 10 gives council members an opportunity to review the proposed ordinance and decide if any changes may be needed before final passage is considered. Normally, preview ordinances get voted on at a later meeting, so section 11 contains ordinances that have already been previewed and council is ready to take action on. Sections 12 and 13 are just sections for the council members and me to make some general comments about various matters involving the community or the operation. I'm going to skip item 14 for a minute and briefly explain BAMA and BETA. After the city council meeting adjourns, the mayor immediately opens up the BAMA meeting. BAMA, or the Broken Arrow Municipal Authority, oversees our utilities. Items in the BAMA meeting will usually refer to water, solid waste, and sewer services. Immediately following BAMA is BETA, or the Broken Arrow Economic Development Authority. BETA discusses commercial business activity within the community. Both authorities' agendas are set up similarly to the city council, though they tend to be much shorter in length. All three of our meetings do allow for what they call an executive session, and we normally hold these meetings after the third meeting of the night. Executive sessions allow city council to speak privately with the city manager and city attorney and are regulated by state law. The Open Public Meetings Act allows for the following to be discussed privately. Matters involving the hiring and firing employees, union negotiations, the purchase or appraisal of land or other real estate, confidential communications between the council, city management, and the city attorney concerning sensitive matters that can include pending litigation, claims, and investigations. Under those circumstances, we would head into executive session. An executive session has to be put on the agenda, and the items that will be discussed must be listed so the public knows what those items are. After the executive session is finished, the council will open the meeting back up and take a public vote. By Oklahoma law, any action taken on an item discussed in executive session has to be made public. Over my career, I've learned that one of the most important responsibilities that we have as city officials is to effectively communicate with our citizens what's going on within the community. This video was prepared to help our community have a better understanding how the city council operates when it comes to meetings' agenda. It's important that we give you this information so you'll have access to find out exactly what happened at the meetings. So we hope that you learned something about the way we do business. You can always look at the agenda on the website. And of course, you're always welcome to attend a city council meeting. Till next time, we hope you've enjoyed this segment. I'm Michael Spurgeon, Broken Arrow City Manager. Have a great day.
Okay, that's been running since probably, I would say, late last summer, and it's on Channel 24 on a regular basis, and it's also on our website. So really, that focused on exactly what the agenda was. You know, and most people that are in the audience tonight, and certainly the folks that are up on the dais, know that process. What I want to talk about now is a short little PowerPoint presentation that talks about the preparation of the agenda and what the administration, which I define as all of the departments that work for the city, we do every single week in two weeks to prepare all of you to be able to make the decisions you make that are on the agenda. So here we go. Agenda preparation steps. And this is for the city council, BAMA, and BETA. And there are essentially four things that we always keep in mind, is there's always the preparation of fact sheets, and every item, as the council members know, there is a fact sheet that goes along with every single item. All the documents have to be loaded into what is known as Legisstar, which we'll talk about here in a few minutes. And then there is a complete approval process where certain individuals have to approve the item to advance to the next step, and we'll talk about that here in just a second here. And then last is there's the publish and the distribution of the agendas. Agendas for public meetings are prepared by City of Broken Arrow staff members using a software known as Legisstar. This includes the city council meetings, the municipal authority meeting, the economic development authority, the board of adjustments, convention and visitors bureau, downtown advisory, and the planning commission. So it's very, very comprehensive. Legislar program allows staff to load fact sheets and attachments for each item for the appropriate section of the meeting. And what you see there actually is a shot of Legisstar, and that is an actual agenda. And the staff can go in and can click on that item, and they can make sure that all the documentation is needed for that particular item so the council members or the appropriate board members could take a look at to make sure they have the information they need to be able to make decisions. What is a fact sheet? We have a lot of questions about a fact sheet. A fact sheet is just that. It's a fact sheet is a document summarizing the items of business. It lists the important facts, purpose, background, and any related costs and recommended actions. I've always believed that it's the proverbial who, what, where, when, and why, so to speak. Council members also want to know what the cost is going to be, and several of the council members, whenever we talk about money, always want to make sure that it's been appropriate, and if not, where's the money coming from? And so we try to include that information when it's appropriate in there. Okay, here we go. Titles for each item must be entered into Legislar by 7:00 a.m. on Wednesday morning the week prior to the meeting. And it is a little bit like sausage making, because there's so much that goes into actually the backend, which is the agenda. There's a lot of documentation, as the council members understand. There's the fact sheet. There could be a copy of a contract. There could be copies of sketch plaits, maps, or a whole host of different documents that we believe are going to be pertinent for you to have to look at in order to be able to make a decision. The draft agendas are reviewed and discussed at the weekly leadership team meeting on Wednesday at 9:00 a.m. For example, the May 16th draft agenda is reviewed on May 10th. So if you come in and walk through City Hall on the Wednesday before the council meeting at nine o'clock, we'll be spending about an hour, at least the first part of it, going over each and every item, and each director, when we get to that item on the agenda, they'll spend anywhere from 10 seconds to two minutes, depending on the length of the item, making sure that everything that we believe you will need to make a decision is included in there. And what's important is, there may be somebody that doesn't have an item on the agenda. However, we're so interconnected as an organization is that all the department directors like to hear what's going on with each item, because a lot of times agendas do touch more than just one department. So by going through the agenda, and I don't get hung up, and I let Beth Ann get hung up in what the wording for fact sheets is, because she does an awesome job at that. She does it two and three times on each agenda. So I'm getting paid for doing that. So, but really is that I want to make sure everything's in there and that the directors are providing the most pertinent information that you need. And then as we go through the approval process, if something has to be changed, if something is not clear, because we're not looking just for content, we're looking for readability, to make sure that, how would we understand it? Because sometimes Beth Ann and I may not see something that's coming to us for the very first time, so we read it as if, you know, we're going to be acting upon it. Okay, and the next item is agenda fact sheets and attachments must be entered by that Thursday morning when the quote-unquote workflow is started in the program. The workflow is the approval process, which makes sure all the necessary directors and staff members review and edit the item before it is approved to go on to the agenda. And this is an actual screenshot that the folks get into when they're looking at an item as a part of the workflow process. When the agenda workflow is completed, all items are forwarded to the city manager for review that Friday morning. In most cases, we're able to, I'm able to start approving the agenda sometime Thursday afternoon, but normally it's Friday, it's a mad rush with all of the items, because everybody's really have gone through and vetted it as much as necessary to make sure that they're accurate. And I'll get an email, which will tell me that there's an item that I need to go into Legisstar that I have to approve. Sometimes, they come in, they multiply like rabbits, and then I'll go in, and there'll be one email, but there'll be 25 items. And then what I have to do is I have to stop. That's why I keep my Friday mornings pretty free, because I try very hard to read through all of the titles, and most of it I understand from Wednesday, but there's a lot of items that I'll have to stop and actually review and make sure I understand, especially if it's going to be something I'm going to present on. But for the most part, by the time they get to me, they've gone through Beth Ann, they've gone through the director, Russell gets involved at sometimes, so they've truly been vetted to make sure that there's accurate information that you need to make decisions. Then what happens is the city clerk processes the final agenda items Friday afternoon and posts them to the public bulletin board outside City Hall as required by the Open Meeting Act and to the public website. Now, some of the council members have been around, whether it's been on the council or you've been on the planning commission, is back in the days when you used to get a packet delivered to you sometime Friday. And these were, I'm talking, depending on the meeting, they would be large books, because the city staff would have to spend a considerable amount of time copying all of those documents that you now, that you get in a link. And it's absolutely amazing, and I wanted to make that point to the public, is that if anyone ever takes the time to go into the agenda on the website and they click on that, they can see everything that the council members get to see. There isn't anything that, unless it's a closed session item, which the city attorney says is only for your eyes, is the people in the public, the people at home can go in and they can see everything that you see.
It used to be that way. When we got the books, it wasn't like that.
That's exactly right. In my past, what we would do is there would always be a complete packet that would be available in the city clerk's office, and we would actually have citizens that would come up to City Hall sometime before the meeting and would take the time to go through that. And this is so much more convenient for the residents as well as all of you, because usually a year or two into your term, you're going, Mike, what do I do with all this? You know, because a lot of it's you want to keep, but when you're talking about minutes and ministerial-type items, it just becomes recycling, so we're actually saving trees. Okay, the next item, city, excuse me, the council authority members receive an email to the link, I'm a little ahead of myself, agenda packets on Friday evening. It is customary for the council to review the package prior to the meeting. This gives them two full business days to look over the information and ask questions. The city clerk's office ensures that all legal documents requiring signatures at the city council, BAMA, or BETA meetings are turned in prior to the meeting. Then the documents are processed, recorded, and filed after each meeting. Agendas are printed prior to the meeting and sent out for the public in front of the lobby of City Hall and outside the doors of the council member, excuse me, council chambers. Now, the one thing I want to mention, and I'll be glad to answer questions, I believe it's towards the end, actually I've got a couple more. I want to make this point is that the city council several years ago changed their meetings to Tuesdays, I understand. And I think it was a great, great decision, because when you get those packets, I don't think the public understands the magnitude of those packets. And I like the fact that you get the link on Friday, and then at your convenience on the weekend, you can go through all of the agenda or portions of it. And then what happens is, if you have questions, and this is what I want to address, is the consent agenda, okay? Because what the public sees is the council members a lot of times voting unanimously for something. Well, I've always believed that it's not a group think. I take the position that you all go through all of those items. And I can tell you is, we have a new council member who every meeting so far has sent me questions. This meeting, there was only a couple, but you know, on June 5th, it might be 20, okay? Because she's still learning what this means, what does this mean, what does that mean? And so that's what Monday and Tuesdays are for. It's an opportunity for you to ask those questions. Now, you could ask those questions in public at the meeting, and sometimes you do for many different reasons, but really, if you ask the question on Monday, you can get your answer, whereas if you ask a question at the meeting Tuesday night, staff might have to get back to you. Because the way we set up our schedules is that we leave Monday and Tuesday relatively flexible. Like, I'm with my staff the entire morning from Tuesday at 9:00 a.m. till about noon, and that's specifically done, so if the council members, like, you'll come in and see me with my staff, and then I have the city attorney, then I'll have HR, I'll have Russell, Kenny. Today, it was my division, is that's intentional. So if in fact council members have questions that Monday morning, Monday evening, I've got everybody I need right there that can help me get you answers, so you will be prepared for the meeting that night. So that's why I set my meetings up on Tuesday. Okay, if you go, all of the agendas, next item here, all of the agendas and minutes are available on the city's homepage, which is at www.brokenarrowok.gov or directly on the website, and the website that draws the entrance is there. And if you go to the area, there's an arrow there, if the residents or interested parties go to where the arrow's pointing down, that's the homepage, and you can see everything. There's, everything is on there for anybody that they want to see going back to any particular meeting they have a question on. I mean, for example, when I was a candidate for Broken Arrow City Manager back in the spring of 2015, I spent way too much time going back and watching videos from the council members to understand the issues. I remember the former superintendent talking about the $370 million bond package the voters were going to consider, where he came before the council and explained that. And then I was following along with the agendas myself to understand exactly how you interact with each other, as well as to learn a little bit more about your anticipation of my interviews. And the residents can do the exact same thing. If there's something, you can tell, you can say, hey, listen, you know, go back to the June 5th meeting, and you can, it's bookmarked to where, they don't have to sit there and watch the video for 45 minutes before they get to that item. They can bookmark it, and it will take them to very close to where they want to go, so they can go right to that item if it's something that's of importance to them. So it's a very, it's a very fluid process. And the next item I want to mention, this is very important, legal posting requirements. All meetings of public body shall be preceded by the advance public notice specifying the time and place of each meeting to be convened, as well as the subject matter or matters to be considered at the meeting. Agendas must be posted 24 hours prior to the scheduled meeting, excluding weeks, weekends, and holidays. Agendas for special meetings must be posted within 48 hours prior to the meeting. Beth Ann and Lisa Blackford are very, very good about making sure that happens. Every now and then, on Monday, we'll amend the agenda, as you all know, there may be something that's coming up, but you know what? If you don't get it in on time, then you've got to wait till the next meeting. And you know, this is accountability tool for the administration, is that council needs to make actions, directors need to get their stuff before the council. I mean, when we go out to bid, for example, usually those bids are only good for such, for a certain period of time, and if we don't get approval or an extension, those bids expire. And that happened earlier this year, and we weren't able to take action. So I think it's important, I think it's important that staff be held accountable to know that there are deadlines. And honestly, a lot of our schedules day-to-day is built around preparing ourselves for tonight. And that's what we do 52 weeks out of the year, or you know, many times each month, we come at least twice, is we spend so much time preparing for the council meeting. And I wanted to talk a little bit more specifically about this, because if you're sitting out in the audience and you see everybody voting yes, sometimes you go, what? You know, there's got to be debate on something. Well, if you, you know what? I feel like the council members have all the time, they have adequate time to look, they have all the information, and if somebody wants to pull something off and talk about it, you do all the time. So I want to just thank Jennifer and IT for helping me put this together and all the comments I got from the staff, and I'll be glad to answer any questions. Hopefully, this has helped not only the council members, as well as the audience and those folks that may watch the meeting tonight.
Council, any questions?
Thank you.
CNN, I'll move on to item 5B, presentation by Tulsa City County Library staff regarding the summer reading program and possible action encouraging participation in the program. Kelly McDowell and Marie Weldon.
Good evening.
Good evening.
I'm Kelly McDowell. I'm the manager of the South Broken Arrow Library, and this is my colleague Marie Weldon, the Broken Arrow Library. She just recently started, and we're excited to have her with us.
So why summer reading? You may have heard of the summer slide, which is something we don't want to see happen to our children. And kids who read over the summer retain and enhance the skills that they have gained over the school year. And we have found, research shows that children who read wildly and frequently are higher achievers than those that don't. And also, our goal is for them to see reading as a lifelong hobby, and this is a great way of introducing that to them.
All right. We have a program for all ages. We've got from babies to senior citizens, so there's no excuse to not participate in the program. You don't need a library card. You can register in the library, preferably at the Broken Arrow Library or the South Broken Arrow Library, we'll talk more about that in a little bit. Or you can register online at tulslabory.org/summer, but that is not available just yet. It starts later.
These are the dates, as we like to tell families. You can sign up and you can read the whole summer long. So the last day is August 5th, and then of course, we will award the grand prize drawings the week of August 21st.
The theme this year is called Build a Better World. We have a separate program this year for pre-K from newborns through five-year-olds. We've not done that before, but we're separating out this year, because we did have a lot of feedback from parents that they didn't want their baby to get the same prize that their fourth grader was getting. So this year, we're offering, in addition to the medal that they all get, Jacob's Ladder, and there's a little picture of it in the presentation. They just have to read eight books and make four library visits. Of course, the newborn is not reading, but we want their parents to read to them, and that counts. You're still building that connection between reading and a bond with someone that loves you, and that helps build that lifelong love of reading, if you associate it with a good feeling. So they'll read eight books and make four library visits to get the medal, and they'll get a coupon book that's worth almost $74. They'll also be in contention for one of 10 grand prizes, which are gift certificates for early literacy and education stores in the area. They can go buy educational toys with the gift certificate. If they read 12 additional books, they get the bonus prize, which is the Jacob's Ladder pictured in the presentation. Children who have completed kindergarten and who are entering fourth grade are in the children's program. They have the same guidelines of reading eight books and making four library visits to get the medal and the same coupon book, but they have different grand prizes, which are really awesome, including a fishing trip with Dick Furo and a bouncy house for a birthday party. Their bonus prize this year is a plush toy. It happens to be a beaver, because beavers are sort of the little construction workers of the natural world.
We have some in Broken Arrow.
Do they? I don't think I've heard that.
We also have a teen and tween program, and that's for children who have completed fifth grade all the way up to age 17. We know that their books are a little bit longer, so we only require them to read six books. We don't track their visits. Their coupon booklets are worth $61. And then this year, they're getting a wooden tower game, and they are also in the drawing for the grand prizes.
Adults, you don't escape. You get to participate too. 18 and over, read four books, and you'll get the wooden tower game as well. And your coupon book is worth more than it's ever been worth any year previously. This year, it's worth almost $32. And it includes a ticket to the state fair, which is something we've had in all the children's prizes in the past, and parents were saying, hey, we want one too. So we've got that this year.
Almost every week, we have performers come in, and we have their exciting, they're entertaining, they're educational. And as you can see on the PowerPoint, these are just a few of the ones that we will have over the summer. And all of the programs are free, all the performers are free, and we invite parents to come along too and have fun.
So as we did last year, we have a mayoral challenge. Tulsa Mayor GT Bynum is challenging all the surrounding communities to get the highest percentage of children ages 0 to 17 enrolled in the summer reading program. You accepted that challenge last year, and we did an awesome job, but we came in second place. So we'd like to try again this year. We would get a special plaque that we can display in City Hall, and we can brag that we have a distinction, the distinction of being a community of active readers. So if you register at the Broken Arrow Library or the South Broken Arrow Library, you will help us win this challenge. Last year, we got 26 Last year, we got 26% of kids in Broken Arrow to participate. That's about 1 in 4, which is really great for a community of our size. But we want to, we want to go even higher this year.
So to help us win, where can you sign up? Where can you register? Broken Arrow Library, which is on Broadway, and then also the South Broken Arrow Library, which is on Chestnut.
That's all we have for you this evening. Thank you so much for your time. Do you have any questions for us?
Any questions, Kelly or Marie?
Well, I love libraries and I love summer reading programs. And I'm thinking, I'll have to figure out some way to read four books this summer because I want that tower thing.
Okay.
And audiobooks count.
Exactly. Audiobooks count. So if you're in your car, just put an audiobook on.
Thank you very much.
Okay. Thank you so much.
Thank you. Do we have a motion?
Thank you.
A challenge?
I make a motion to accept the challenge.
Second.
Motion second, any discussion? Roll call, please.
Wimpy? Yes. Parks?
Yes.
Lester?
Yes.
Udi?
Yes.
Thurman?
Yes.
Item 6 is the consent agenda. I want to remove item S. I've, I'm not, it's not a project I'm involved in or have anything to do with, but I do work for the owners of that project. So I see I have a conflict. Any other items to be removed?
Move for approval of consent agenda excluding item S.
Second.
Motion second, roll call, please.
Wimpy? Yes. Parks?
Yes.
Lester?
Yes.
Udi?
Yes.
Thurman?
Yes.
Move for approval of item S.
Second.
Is there any further discussion? Roll call, please.
Wimpy? Yes. Parks?
Yes.
Lester?
Yes.
Udi?
Yes.
Thurman?
Okay, next item on the agenda is citizens' opportunity to address the council. And we do have one person signed up, Charles Brown. Please state your name and address.
My name is Chuck Brown. I live at 1400 West Rockport Street in Broken Arrow, Oklahoma. And I'm here today, thank you, council, by the way. Thank you for giving me this opportunity. I'm with Floral Haven Funeral Home. Many of you are familiar with Floral Haven. I know, I know Michael's very familiar. And I'm here today to talk to you about the Avenue of Flags that we do every Memorial Day. And this is the 45th anniversary of the Avenue of Flags. And for those that don't know the history, 45 years ago, we had a widow of a fallen soldier that brought in a flag that had draped across her husband's casket. And she asked us if we would display that flag during Memorial Day. And that, that flag prompted questions. Whose flag is that? Would you, would you fly my husband's flag? And so on and so forth. So over the last 45 years, it's grown to the largest display of flags for a private cemetery in the, in the United States. So that's something that we're extremely proud of. Every time that you drive down 71st or 129th and you see each one of those flags, remember that those, you know, those were, those were soldiers that fought for our country. So I wanted to just give some, some dates and times. Saturday, May 27th, at 10:00 a.m., we do our Memorial Day Observation, Observance Program, rather, with the raising of the new donated flags. Everyone is welcome for this program and we certainly invite the council. We would wish that each and every one of you would join us on that Saturday morning at 10:00 a.m. Later on that day, we start the changing of the guard for the Tomb of the Unknown Soldier. Members of the Starbase Composite Squadron of the Civil Air Patrol will reenact the changing of the guard that takes place at Arlington Cemetery in Washington, DC. We reenact that here. And they perform this over the course of the weekend. And as many of you know the story of the Tomb of the Unknown Soldier, that is guarded 24 hours a day and rain or shine. And we do that here on that, that weekend. So that begins at 1:00 p.m. Saturday. Many of these cadets have actually traveled to Arlington Cemetery and trained with the sentinels there. And so they, they're very proud to present the opportunity to come back and go through that process. So we just want to make everybody aware of the fact that the Avenue of Flags is a treasure here in Broken Arrow. And it's something that at Floral Haven, we're extremely proud of. And we just want to make sure that everybody takes the opportunity to come out, visit us, come through. We have people come from all over the country just to travel through our cemetery and look at those flags. That's how special they are. So thank you again for the opportunity to come in and talk about something I'm passionate about. Is there any questions?
Any questions, Chuck?
No? Very, very, very much, thank you.
Thank you.
And next we have General Counsel Business. Item A, consideration discussion and possible action to schedule quarterly city council meetings at various locations throughout the city. Mr. Spurgeon?
Thank you, Mayor, Mr. Counsel. I've spoken to all of you, I believe individually, about, about the notion. And I want to present this to you formally tonight. I believe in an ongoing effort for maintaining the ultimate transparency as we can as, as a governing body, administration. Because I think sometimes we need to, we need to go to the people. And I would like your permission to, starting with the fiscal year, July 1st, is once a quarter, we will pick a location, four different locations throughout the city. And we will actually hold a, the regular special city council meeting at that facility. And in addition to that, at least an hour before the meeting, we will have a meet and greet. Well, maybe 90 minutes, we'll just kind of see how it goes. And where to all the directors and senior staff, as well as the council members, we'll advertise for everything accordingly, is we'll make ourselves available for folks to come in an open house type forum to just, you know, basically shake some hands, say, you know, what's going on? All the directors are here. If you have a question about something, you can just say, I'm introducing to Michael Skates from Developmental Services. I mean, each, every town, parts of town has some of the same issues, but some parts of town have different issues. And I think it's important that we actually go out into the community. So with your permission, I'd like to have council's support of this so we can go forward with it. Then I'll work with Russell and the city clerk's office to identify some locations. And then we'll let you know where there's going to be and we'll get them on the calendar.
I think it's a great idea.
It is a good idea.
Yeah, it's a good idea.
Do you need action on that?
No, because...
I've got it as an action item. The city manager's staff does yet. To direct the city manager to develop a calendar identifying a meeting in each quarter of fiscal year 2018 that will be held in a satellite location within each ward of the city.
So move.
Second.
Motion second, discussion?
Took the words out of my mouth.
Roll call, please.
Wimpy? Yes. Parks?
Yes.
Lester?
Yes.
Udi?
Yes.
Thurman?
Yes.
Item B, consideration discussion and possible action to schedule a special meeting regarding economic development in South Broken Arrow. Michael?
Thank you, Mayor. Sometime this summer, probably after I get back from vacation in July, I would like to ask council if we can hold a special meeting to, somewhere to be determined in, in the south part of Broken Arrow. And I think, I think what we need to do is we need to roll down to the folks in the south part of town. Some of the council members have, that's their respective wards. Because as you know, over the last four or five months, the, there's been a lot of criticism of the city about the perception, about the lack of development that's happened within that part of our awesome community. Okay? The bottom line is, the south, I'm excuse me, the north part of town has, has grown by leaps and bounds. And I think some folks in the south part of town would like the opportunity to find out why maybe the, the south hasn't grown as quickly. Now, without going into it in detail tonight, we, we all understand how long it's taken for the north part of town to grow. There was an article in the Focus Newsletter in the utility bills last month, which I tried to address it, but there's nothing better than eyeball to eyeball. And so I'd like the council members to, to support going down to somewhere, having the meeting, because you know, there's questions going to be about 101st and Elm in that area and how that area is in a process of, of, you know, developing a new identity. And believe me, there are folks that are concerned about that as well. I also want to take the opportunity to explain to citizens how much of an investment of taxpayers' money has been spent to prepare that area for the development that I believe will happen. Because if we were to tell people that $15 to $20 million has been spent to prepare the area for, for, to be primed for growth, they may not be aware of that. But when you think about the widening of two roads to five lane, when you think about six, over $6 million to put gates in on the turnpike there at Aspen, $850,000 for a new sewer line from 111th to 121st to accommodate capacity for wastewater. I mean, those, those are adult dollars. And so I want to go down and, and just, we'll have an agenda. I want to invite our EDC. I mean, they're the tip of the spear when it comes to economic development. And I think that they should be there as well. I did discuss them briefly with me and they're absolutely in support of going down there. And also, Norm Stevens, on my behalf, has contacted Danny Signorelli regarding, from the developer's perspective, for the shops of Aspen Creek. And he said if we can work the dates, he would be glad to come up and explain what type of recruitment efforts that he has made. So I think this is a great opportunity. Might even, we might even get Bill Warren to come to town. And I think if Bill had plenty of notice, he might, he might come. And we can have, we can have this discussion. I think it's important, especially when we have taken some criticism, right, wrong, or indifferent, we can't argue that. Let's go down there and let's talk to people. There could be some comments that come up about what's going on on the, on the property with, where the restaurant is. Ember's on the other side of, of the turnpike. And I think we need to be prepared to answer questions that may come up about that. Basically, let's go down there and be prepared to try to address any questions come up after a presentation. And we'd probably have an open house type forum and then we would have a formal meeting. So I'd like to ask council's consideration of that.
I think it's a great idea. There was a news story last night, as a matter of fact, about this very thing. So I've certainly got my fair share of calls when something's going to happen.
And this is real to me because I live within a mile, two miles and a half of a radius of all of this in South Broken Arrow. And, and I get asked the questions and, and I think there's important questions, important answers that can be given. And since I live right in the middle of it, it's important to me. So I, I'm glad to see we're doing this. And I would make the motion to direct the city manager to select a date and location for a special city council meeting on that topic.
Second. Motion second, any discussion?
Yes, I, I certainly echo that. I have a lot of questions myself. You know, all I ever hear is that where there's not enough people there, there's not enough buildings there. But yet, when you don't see anything going, a lot of people, I hear complaints of people outside of Broken Arrow also, that say, oh yeah, we came to Broken Arrow, we went down to your theater, but we had to go to Tulsa to, or Bigsby, to eat dinner afterwards. And so we're losing a tremendous amount of sales tax. So I likewise have questions that the citizens have and kind of, I know that they're not all developed yet, but there's still a lot of development going on down there. But you don't see any movement in commercial areas. So I certainly am in favor of it also.
Okay. Okay, any more discussion? Roll call, please.
Wimpy? Yes. Parks?
Yes.
Lester?
Yes.
Udi?
Yes.
Thurman?
Yes.
Okay, item C, consideration discussion and possible approval of an authorization to publish the notice of availability for annual audit for fiscal year 2015, 2016. Tom?
Thank you, Mayor, Council. Tom Caldwell, I'm Finance Director, Treasurer. At last council meeting, you received the fiscal year 2015, 16 audit, single audit, and the required communication. State statutes require that we publish a notice of availability of that audit once we, once you have received that. So we're asking the council to approve a notice of availability of the annual audit for fiscal years 15, 16 and authorize its publication.
Any questions, Tom?
I make a motion to approve the notice of availability of annual audit for fiscal year 2015, 16 and authorize its publication.
Second.
Motion second, any discussion? Roll call, please.
Wimpy? Yes. Parks?
Yes.
Lester?
Yes.
Udi?
Yes.
Thurman?
Yes.
Item D, consideration discussion and possible approval of PUD 260, PUD at Aspen Crossing. Larry Curtis?
Good evening, council. Planning unit development, PUD 260, involves a 49.52 acre of undeveloped and unplanted property located in the northeast corner of Jasper Street and Aspen Avenue. Approximately 262 single-family attached and detached residential units and proposed in conjunction with PUD request. The east part of the property is located within the 100-year floodplain of Aspen Creek. The 100-year floodplain will be left as open space as provided in the PUD. The residential portion of the project site was originally approved by Broken Arrow City Council on December 3, 2007 as PUD 183 and BAZ 1789, subject to the property being platted. A subsequent major amendment, PUD 183A, was proposed on March 23, 2010 and approved, subject to the property being platted, but was never done so. PUD 183 and PUD 183A have expired. BAZ 1789, the request to rezone the property from A1, A2 and AR2 to RS3 does not expire, but has not been changed by ordinance due to the property not being platted. Property was annexed into the Broken Arrow City limits on May 21, 2001 underneath ordinance 2361. PUD 260 is essentially the same as previously provided in PUD 183, with the exception of the additional five-acre parcel on the corner of Jasper Street and Aspen Avenue. BAZ 19, excuse me, BAZ 1793, a request to rezone this five-acre parcel from A1 to CG was approved by city council on January 22, 2008, subject to property being platted. Property remains unplanted at this time. Portions of this tract are currently platted as Lot 1, Block 8 of South Town Estates. Covenant restrictions of this parcel are in conflict with the PUD proposed underneath PUD 260. The development regulations proposed underneath PUD 260 are in accordance with the comprehensive plan. The Planning Commission, their meeting on April 27, 2017, reviewed and recommended approval by a vote of 4 to 0 for PUD, for this PUD. Six people from the audience spoke regarding this application, voicing concerns about traffic, property value, flooding, access points, screening fence design and commercial development on the corner. It is a recommendation of staff and the Planning Commission to approve PUD as recommended by the Planning Commission. And I'm here to answer any questions that the council may have.
Any questions, Larry?
What was the neighbors' main complaints or...
The biggest concern that was echoed by a couple of the citizens was the size of home that was presented within the PUD in comparison to other homes within the neighborhood, in addition to the lot located in that subdivision being incorporated and being in conflict with the covenants. The developer has been made aware of that The developer has been made aware of that and will be addressing that issue before they move forward with their plat.
Okay. We do have one person signed up to speak. Ollie Van Dusen? Please state your name and address.
Abby Van Dusen, one-two-nine-one-zero, South Hundred Forty-Fifth East Avenue. First, I'd like to thank you guys for giving me the opportunity to have a chance to speak and share my concerns. I just want to let it be known that I've talked to a lot of the neighbors in the area, and we are not in opposition of PUD two sixty becoming a residential development. We understand that the city's growing, and that's a good problem to have, and that this is a prime location for residential development. But as long-term citizens of this area, we understand that the traffic and residential components of this neighborhood, we understand it in a very holistic manner. If you've ever driven down Aspen on a Saturday or Sunday, you know that the traffic is easily backed up one and a half miles, and for those that live on Aspen, it's hard to even get out of our driveways at that point. With that being said, one of our main concerns is the speed limit on that road, which right now, it's fifty miles per hour on a two-lane. As opposed to just off of Thirty-first, up off of Aspen, we have forty miles per hour, which is a five-lane road, and just, just off of, just north of Thirty-first and Aspen, it's forty-five just off of the creek. And so, we suggest lowering the speed limit on that road with the density increasing. Our second area of concern is lighting. Seeing adequate street lighting implemented as the residential, residential density increases only makes sense to help prevent possible accidents. Just last month, I was outside doing yard work, and a wreck happened right in front of my home. So, I know that's a serious issue through there, especially with intense traffic. Without a doubt, talking with neighbors in the area, our main concern is having an area of this property zoned commercial. Previously, when this section was approved as commercial, the land near the Warren Theater was not under development, and residential density had not dramatically changed. So those are two major differences between when it was approved many years ago and today. Now, just half a mile up the road, we have sixty, more or less acres for sale that are zoned commercial, and that does not even include the Warren, the Aspen Crossing, Aspen Creek, Aspen Crossing development at the Warren itself. With this being said, you have an abundance of commercial property just half a mile up the road, closest to the turnpike, which really makes sense being zoned commercial, showing, that really shows that there's no real need for commercial across the street from half a million-plus homes, including property itself. Just put yourself in our shoes, you know, would you want a Walgreens or a liquor store going in across the street from you? Or a doctor's office, or, once it's zoned commercial, we can't guarantee what's going to be there. They might promise it will be something nice, but that's immeasurable, and a matter of opinion. I would just ask the residents of Indian Springs if they wish the property across from them was that little strip shopping center, and I bet they would say no as well. In all reality, we just don't think that area makes sense to be zoned commercial now, as opposed to when it was about nine years ago or so, because the development has changed.
Can you wrap up your comments, please?
I'm good. That's it? I pretty much was almost done, so I'm good.
Well done.
Thank you.
Any questions, Abby?
Are you, are you opposed to commercial, or are you afraid of a specific kind of commercial?
We are opposed to commercial, and I've talked with, even the properties up north, the new development, just north of this proposed development, I've talked with people who are interested in buying properties in that area, and having this property being zoned commercial hinders them from buying the property in that development.
You know, most of our corners are designed to be commercial corners.
It's just, for us, in terms of property value, when you have homes across the street sitting at half a million, a million plus, it doesn't make sense. If that were you, would you want a Walgreens or a liquor store, or, it's just, it's definitely something to put into perspective.
I will tell you, where I live, it's Bixby across the street, and they zoned across the street from me, commercial. Didn't impact the value of my house at all. I mean, the reality is, I had no say-so in it, and they did rezone it.
That's why I'm here, trying to have a say-so. You know?
I'm just saying.
Yeah.
The reality is, and I've been in commercial real estate for forty years, it, it doesn't impact the value. I, I understand what you're saying.
I think that's a matter of opinion.
I understand, I appreciate it.
But it, you have quite, I mean, over ninety acres, just half a mile up the road, that's completely zoned commercial, and with the traffic as is, even honestly, if that was zoned commercial with two lanes right now, you couldn't even access it on the weekends because it's back, it's back-to-back.
But the market dictates when they'll do something. They're not going to build something tomorrow, or next week, or probably next year.
And it's not a matter, if they build, we have no control over what they put there across from our homes.
Again, the market dictates that, and I understand your concern, I do.
And I do too, but for over fifty years, we've taken the intersections, and most of them are, do have commercial development. I won't say much for the liquor store, but if I needed some medication, I don't have any trouble with a drugstore, not having to drive a half-mile or three-quarters mile away. You take one hundred and eleventh at Elm Place, they took a huge intersection there that could have been a good commercial property, and built three or four hundred apartments in there, and that was conducive to that intersection, because it is a high-traffic area. So look at it from the developer's point of view, they're not going to put houses up to that corner, they're going to put high-density, even if it's residential, it's going to be a high Disney residential. So I think, and, and there's not any sales tax to the city from that, that's who we pay our police and fire. So, we'd rather have it there than we would have it mid-mile. At least there's some plan, knowing that it's going to always be, our intersections are going to be commercial.
I, and I, I hear what you're saying, but I live in a neighborhood that actually is designed that way, and after a while, you find, you come to realize how nice it is to have the QuickTrip or the Walgreens, both of which live, are at the, are on corners, it's awfully convenient. So I, I, I hear what you're saying, but I think, in keeping with the comprehensive plan that has been around for, I mean, the policy we've had for fifty years, the, the hope is that people will develop commercial on the corner so that the mid-mile and is reserved for the housing additions and things, that's, and, and that it gets lower density as you go farther back. That's, that's how it's designed, and that's actually in keeping with the comprehensive plan. But you do raise another question that I have interest in. Has a traffic study been done on those streets, or is that, is it going to be done to determine what our traffic needs are there? Because if we do have mile backups, or we do have speed limits that are fifty, is something going to be done to look at that, maybe not as part of this, but is that something we're looking at?
Larry's got a response to that?
He's happy to answer that question. We're actually bringing that suggestion to the traffic council, is reducing from, I think it's fifty miles an hour down there to forty, and so, as a part of the council, the review committee and the council, that will be reviewed, so we are bringing that to their attention.
Thank you.
I also know the engineer I talked to said the traffic tests were done Monday through Fridays, and they're going to be doing it on the weekends to have a more accurate result, because the weekends are really the high-traffic issues on that street.
Yeah, and that's a good idea.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Do we have any more discussion or a motion?
Make a motion to approve PUD two sixty, Aspen Crossing, as recommended by town information and staff.
Second.
Question second, any discussion? Roll call, please.
Wimpy?
Yes.
Parks?
Yes.
Lester?
Yes.
Udi?
Yes.
Thurman?
Yes.
Okay, item E, I'm not going to read all this, Beth Ann. Consider discussion, possible approval, resolution number ten-twenty-two.
No, nobody gave me a hard time about this item at all, in the way, the way I had it done. And I've been given a three-minute window to get through it all, but basically, back in December, you may remember that we brought to the council the second amended interlocal agreement, which brought the city of Broken Arrow into a regional partnership for the nine-one-one. And essentially, my understanding what hap, what is happening is Windstream is probably going to be in the process of phasing out its nine-one-one activities. And so, this is something that the police chief has actually been working on for, for quite some time, with Incog and with all the other cities. One of the things that I did want to talk about just briefly is the reason for this resolution and the title being so extensive is because we are coming a little bit late to the agreement. There was an original master services agreement, and then there have been ten addendums, addenda that have been approved by all the various jurisdictions, or they're in the process of having them approved. And it, it was a little unconventional of a process, because you did have to go out for competitive bidding for the, the various equipment, and the addenda came about as a result of when the bids came in, and, and as the municipalities have worked through the process of, of refining the agreement. It's my understanding from the police chief that because the master agreement is actually close to expiring, I believe it's going to be a year or so, then it's contemplated that the city of Broken Arrow will go ahead and lease the equipment. And as we move forward with the cooperation of the other municipalities and Incog, then we'll likely move towards purchase of this. But some of the advantages to handling like this is, it, it really makes a big difference. You get better, greater purchasing power for member, for member municipalities. It allows us to gain access to technical and customer service at a higher level than if we were operating as a single entity. It also enables member communities to share technical system redundancies in case of failures, software failures, or core nine-one-one routing, routing failures. And, and that's pretty important, I think. This particular resolution, even though it is quite long, what it does is, I, I wanted to be transparent from a council and also a staff perspective with regard to what the master services agreement actually accomplished, and I actually set forth what each of the addenda were, so that anyone who got bored or interested, they, they could actually just look at the agenda and see what it was that the council was approving. This particular resolution, it, it essentially approves all of these with just a single motion. I anticipate that at the next meeting or the meeting after this, then we will present you with a letter to notify Windstream that in the next year or so, we'll be terminating the service with them, and my, I believe that we should be online in October of this. So, the police chief is here, if I bungled any of that information, feel free to correct me.
Mayor, council members, just real quick, David Boggs, police chief, I do want to clarify one thing, I may have misspoken to Beth Ann, but we are actually moving from, right now, you all probably realize, about every four or five years, we bring you a rather large purchase to Windstream, and we actually buy pieces of the nine-one-one magic box that handles the calls in, routes it correctly to our PS app. The AT&amp;T agreement will be a permanent lease. What that'll do, much like leasing a vehicle, a little more expensive on the month-to-month, but we're taking that large purchase and spreading it out over the life of the equipment, and the whole system gets upgraded at the appropriate time as part of the lease agreement. So we won't be coming back for singular, large purchases. We'll stay current with the technology, along with all of the other Incog partners, as we move forward. So, if you have any other questions, be glad to answer them.
Any questions, Chief?
Make a motion to approve resolution ten-twenty-two and authorize its execution.
Second.
Question second, any discussion? Roll call, please.
Wimpy?
Yes.
Parks?
Yes.
Lester?
Yes.
Udi?
Yes.
Thurman?
Yes.
Okay, item F, consideration, discussion, possible approval, reapportment of Stephen Knight to the city of Broken Arrow Board of Adjustment. Laura Curtis?
Counsel, Board of Adjustment members are appointed to serve a three-year term. The terms for the Board of Adjustment member for Stephen Knight has expired at May first of this year. Mr. Knight was appointed to the Board of Adjustment on September first, two thousand five, by city council to fill a vacancy created by the resignation of Richard Bays, whose term was to expire at the May first of this year. Mr. Knight has expressed his willingness to continue to serve on the board for another term, and I believe Mayor Thurman has reached out to Mr. Knight and has suggested his reapportment, and I'm here to answer any questions that you might have.
Any questions, Larry?
Make a motion to approve the reapportment of Stephen Knight to serve an additional three-year term on the Board of Adjustment, to expire May first, two thousand twenty.
Second.
Question second, any discussion? Roll call, please.
Wimpy?
Yes.
Parks?
Yes.
Lester?
Yes.
Udi?
Yes.
Thurman?
Yes.
Item ten, preview ordinances are earned, item eleven, ordinances, eleven A, consideration discussion, and possible adoption of ordinance thirty-four eighty-four. Beth Ann?
Yes, sir, we, as you know, we're in the process of going through from a staff level with a consultant and preparing a downtown master plan overlay. Originally, it was contemplated that we would have this project complete by August. However, the city manager and planning staff, Development Services, are very, very interested in moving through this process at a pace which will maximize community involvement. So in order to do that, the city manager had requested that we bring back the ordinance, which gives staff until December thirty-first of two thousand seventeen to complete this process. Now, of course, it's always contemplated that we may need to move it again, but, but I can tell you, at least from a staff perspective, things seem to be moving along very well. So, I'll be happy to answer any questions.
Let me just add one, thank you, thank you, Beth Ann, is that I think on the twenty-fifth, we're going to see the consultants draft for the first time as, as, as a staff, and then, once we get that, then we'll get it out to the council members and start that process. They've put together a very comprehensive document based on the meeting that we have and the input from stakeholders, and I'm sure there's going to be more feedback from stakeholders, because one of the things I wa, I want to do is, how I view something that I, that may work is completely different than somebody that's going to borrow money and build something. And so, I, I want to make sure that we find that right balance between what we believe is appropriate, you as governing body members, that you turn this over to the planning board to manage and so forth, and what we, what we, the feedback we get from those folks that are going to make those investments. And so, I, so that's why I'm asking for the additional time, because I think it'll take, with the summer, summer coming up, I think it'll take a few more months, but I just, maybe not, but I just want to make sure we give ourselves plenty of time.
I'll make a motion to adopt ordinance number thirty-four eighty-four.
Second.
Question second, any discussion? Roll call, please.
Wimpy?
Yes.
Parks?
Yes.
Lester?
Yes.
Udi?
Yes.
Thurman?
Yes.
Item twelve, remarks and inquiries by governing body members, any remarks or inquiries?
I was just going to add to Memorial Day weekend's services out at Flora Haven. If you guys haven't been to the Tomb of the Unknown Soldiers reenactment, it's incredible, and if you go really late at night, that's really special, because they go twenty-four hours a day, and these, it's, it's kids that are doing this, basically, and it's quite impressive, and they train for a very long time to make sure everything is spot-on, so just encourage everyone to go out there at some point.
Anything else? Okay, we'll move on to item thirteen, remarks and updates by city manager, Michael?
Thank you, Mayor, I've talked a lot tonight, so I only have two items. We have a couple more meetings to go through, and then, plus Kenny has to talk, so I got to save him some, some, some time. The first thing is, at your place this evening was the proposed twenty-eighteen fiscal year city budget, and included in there is my budget message. I think that you'll find, my budget message is rather lengthy, because it's not just the traditional, here's, here's how much the budget is, here's how much it went up over last year. It includes all the traditional facts and figures about, about the spending plan. It also includes proposed work plans, as well as a snapshot of some of the major expenditures from our capital improvement program. So you've got work plans for general government, for BAMA, and a lot of information about, about the purchases we're going to make. There is a special meeting scheduled for next, next Monday at the Public Safety Facility at five-thirty. I think we're going to have dinner beforehand, and then, then, the way it's going to work, just real quick, is that Beth Ann's going to write the agenda to where we can talk about a whole host of things, because there are a number of things I need some direction from the governing body on. For example, is, one of the items is talking about and getting permission to move forward with preparing the community to vote on the next round of general bond obligations in August, I believe, August of twenty eighteen. There's also some decisions I need regarding in the Center for the Creative Arts, and a request for ongoing operational expenses, so I need some direction there, and there's a whole host of other items that I need your input on. And as a part of the budget presentation, the Streets of Stormwater Director and Kenny Swab are going to talk about the roads that are going to be done with the vision tax money. It just started to come in, even though the tax started in January, for example, that we did start collecting the tax for the additional firefighters, police officers, and the streets until March of this year. And so, the one thing council said last year was, once that's approved, you, as a part of the budget process, you want to look at the streets that we're planning on, on, on improving. So, it's going to be, it's going to be probably a couple of hours of just going back and forth, going through everything, so you'll have a comprehensive understanding of exactly what the spending plan and the plans of work will look like for the coming fiscal year. And then, the other thing was, I want to let the council know, is that I mentioned, I was a part of the recruitment on behalf of the mayor to find a new executive director for the OML. And there was a seven-member committee from the board that was appointed to do the national search to find an individual to serve as what I consider to be one of the most important non-municipal official who represents municipalities. And the Oklahoma Municipal League, though, is, the OML, as we call it, and we got down to four folks, and a week ago yesterday, I traveled Oklahoma City and interviewed those four individuals. The person that I recommended did not make the final two. And obviously, it's a democracy, and so, we went forward, and an individual was, was selected, which I could not support, and I explained that to the mayor, and I explained to my, him my reasons why, and we drove down to Oklahoma City last Friday, and there's twenty-one members, they were probably between the conference call and the, the folks in attendance, I would say nineteen to twenty, and were there, and it's, the mayor's the board member, and, and basically, and I'll let him add anything he would like to add, is that we simply could not support that top candidate, so there were two individ, two towns that voted against this individual, and it was Broken Arrow and Collinsville. However, he has a hundred and ten percent of our support, because that's what we're supposed, supposed to do, but just in case any of you hear anything, you know, Broken Arrow could not support the person that was ultimately appointed to OML, so.
Okay. Yeah, if you have any questions, you can talk to Michael about it, and he can explain to you everything. He's spent a lot of time with that process, and I, I think we made the right decision, and hopefully, we'll see how that works out. But we do support the new director, and hopefully, things work well for him. We do have an executive session, so I would entertain a brief, a motion for a brief recess to go into BAMA and BETA.
So moved.
Second.
Question second. Question second, roll call, please.
Wimpy?
Yes.
Parks?
Yes.
Lester?
Yes.
Udi?
Yes.
Thurman?
Yes. I'll call the Broken Arrow Missile Authority Meeting to Order. Roll call, please.
Wimpy?
Yes.
Parks?
Here.
Lester?
Here.
Lester?
Here.
Udi?
Yes, I'm here.
Thurman?
Here. Consideration, have the consented any items to be removed?
Move for approval of the consent agenda. Second.
Motion second, roll call, please.
Wimpy?
Yes.
Parks?
Yes.
Lester?
Here.
Udi?
Yes.
Thurman?
Yes. We have a public hearing, appeals and presentations, presentation update concerning the status of the authority's water and wastewater utility infrastructure. Kenny, so this is what you're going to spend the rest of the evening talking about, right?
Thank you, Chairman, trustees. First and foremost, I noticed in Mr. Spurgeon's video that I was wearing the same shirt and tie that I'm wearing right now. I do have other shirts and ties, I just like this one. If you'll recall, at the April eighteenth council meeting, Mr. Spurgeon-
You're going to ask for a pay raise for seeing the bind of the shirt and tie.
I guess I could, couldn't I? At the April eighteenth council meeting, Mr. Spurgeon talked about staff coming back and giving an update on our water and sewer projects and that's what this is about. May the third, two thousand and sixteen, so just over a year ago, we made a presentation to the council at that time, basically kind of showing the status of our water and sewer and even storm, but mainly the water and sewer, the condition, the aging, and how much we had grown over the past forty to fifty years and then your infrastructure has to grow to keep up with it. Today, I'm very excited to let you know what we've accomplished and where we stand in a year. So, I'll go ahead and begin with the presentation. First of all, we're going to talk about the water system improvements. We actually have twelve projects in some sort of design or construction or just about to advertise and go into construction. So, I'll just hit on a few brief items and points on them. The second supplemental connection with Tulsa, that's the one that we started, I believe, April the nineteenth last year and we had water flowing through our connection by August the fifth. Record time, a hundred and eight days. That's complete. That's really kind of started this year off. Twenty-four inch water line, that's a connection from basically the Battle Creek area up on Omaha, Fifty-first Street, headed south to Albany or Sixty-first. It really will help with the distribution and the circulation of the water on the north end of town. The design is complete, but there's a big development going in at that location and we're trying to work with that developer and allow them to do what they need to do and what we need to do. So, there may be some redesign to that. The current design is actually approved by DEQ, but we may have some modification. Our goal is to actually have that in construction later this winter. Next one is elevated water storage tank. At the last council meeting, we actually received a direction on land acquisition, so we're going to move forward with that and then go right into design. The construction monies, we don't have yet, but at least we can get it designed and move forward. Ground storage tank mixers, as we've learned by switching over to chloramines about three and a half years ago or so, chloramines are a fantastic disinfectant, but you have to give a lot of attention to them and really at your storage tanks. So, we've got, you actually just had approval on this agenda to go ahead and start construction on some mixers in the, all five ground storage tanks. So, that's our five, it'd be five million gallon at Battle Creek and the four million gallons up on Tiger Hill. So, it's actually four tanks that we're adding the mixers to. The ground storage tank, the west one on Tiger Hill, one million gallon, we're actually rehabbing, there'll be some painting and some improvements to the structural integrity of that. So, that's actually moving forward as well. Now, some of the bigger ones, the pre-treatment or plate settlers, you just approved that previously and the consent to actually make some modifications. This is kind of our, if you will, our bottleneck at the plant that's creating a little bit of challenges for us. As we address these challenges, we can actually increase our production at the plant to actually thirty million gallons per day. So, this is something that we'll probably, we'll go and design most of the year and hopefully, later this year or sometime next year, move into construction on this one. Copper sulfate feed, that is an algae cider. So, it kills algae at the plant. This is a booster pump that will actually feed the chemical to kill the algae before it gets into the plate settlers and then that way it won't foul our membranes. That design's already underway and move into construction later this year. Jasper Water Line, Hundred Thirty-first Street from just basically Olive, about a half mile east. It's an eight-inch line right now. We want to upsize to a twelve-inch line. The design is underway. Construction monies are actually about a year or two out, but we think we can actually do this with our in-house crews. So, that's why we've moved the design up and tried to save some money and get it moving as quicker. Downtown water line improvements, this is an ongoing process. We've got some money in our loan right now. We want to upsize College from Main Street to Cedar from a four-inch to an eight-inch to help the circulation and distribution of the system. Design is under progress right now. We'll be in construction later this summer, by, no later than the fall. A few other items for the water is Kenwood Hills Booster Pump Replacement. That actually would have actually been in construction, but the guy standing before you had a bright idea, he thought one day, as he's driving down the expressway and said, why are we trying to rehab a forty-year-old booster pump station when we can now tie bore underneath the highway and tie it to our high-pressure plane, which would be the tank at First Baptist Church? So, my staff and I talked it through, looked at it, got with the consultant and we decided it actually is a better improvement. Takes away maintenance and operations of a booster pump station, puts them on the high-pressure plane, which boosts their fire protection and we just felt like it's a, a better solution to save money. Staff and house staff is actually completing that design. Should, we're about sixty percent complete. We should be done later this summer, early this fall and go to construction hopefully by winter. Last two items, long-term water supply plan. For the, those that were here previously, we had a special council meeting in, I believe it was February, to talk about the, the twenty-sixty water plan. What are we going to do moving forward? So, we're looking at a long-term horizon. At that meeting, we had great discussion, great input from everybody, giving everybody opportunity to go through it a little bit more. I'm going to set some time aside and meet with Ms. Wimpy and go through that with her and get her up to speed. And hopefully, this fall, come back and get final, that document so we can move forward with it. And lastly, as I said earlier, about chloramines, it's a great disinfectant, but it needs a lot of attention. And as we've learned over the last few years of dealing with it, we need to create a monitoring program, like we've said, at the tanks and some of the other locations, a little more than if you use chlorine. So, we actually got that started earlier this, this past spring. We've got some testing and now we're developing a, more of a full-fledged program with that. Wastewater system improvements, this is the one that needs the most attention, as everybody knows. Right now, the preliminary treatment, which is, that's a headworks and the grit removal, it's at DEQ for review right now. It's about twelve, thirteen million dollars construction. We anticipate advertising this June and being in construction on this in September. Kind of tied to that, the next one down is the digester rehab. That's actually on the street right now, advertising. Believe it's an early June opening, so we anticipate being in construction by August on that. Both of these together are running a little over fourteen, fifteen million to the Lynn Lane Wastewater Treatment Plant. Help, obviously, on the operations and the, how we go through the treatment process as a whole, but the other thing is, they're both will help on odor control as well. The wastewater system master plan, we're actually just finalizing that right now. The document's in and the only thing we have to really do is do the final review and make sure that all the capital improvements that we have identified over the last couple of years are in the plan. The key here is kind of like the water. What are we going to do with our wastewater system over the next several years? So, that document is almost complete. Bar screens are approved. We're ready to advertise that here shortly. This is for all of our lift stations, putting some screens in front of them to take care of a lot of the debris that comes in and clogs up our pumps and creates a problem for them. A lot of our stations don't have that, so we're already putting some bar screens in those stations. East Haskell subdivision sewer upgrade, this is a large subdivision that needs a lot of upgrade in their sewer system. Money, again, is about twenty nineteen, but we're trying to get the design done and this may be something that our crews can, can address as we go along to help reduce some of the cost. Elm Creek trunk line, the upsize of that. So, this is just the main sewer line just west of Elm, down in the south part of town that goes to Lynn, Lynn Lane Wastewater Treatment Plant. This is largely about an eighteen inch in most places. It's overloaded. The system is, is overloaded with the waste that's being carried to the plant. We've got something else that's helping that, but we've got a, it's in design right now. Taking a look at some modifications and hopefully, in the next year or two, get that into construction. We don't have the funds yet, but it's scheduled in the future. Secondary clarifier rehab, the design is complete and we will be going back to OWRB to get some funding. Most likely, this fall, this is one of the big packages that we'll go back. So, this should be in construction early next year. Next handful here are really trunk lines. So, the county line trunk sewer, I think everybody's very aware of that, nineteen-eighty-four construction. It's been eat up by gases. We're in design right now. Design's about ninety percent complete. We're ready to go back and take a look at any additional right-of-way that we need. Well, this is, be tied to that secondary clarifier I talked about. Later this fall, this will be one in the package that we'd go back and get the construction monies. This one is about twenty million dollars to replace. Lynn Lane trunk sewer, this is actually from Jasper into the plant, sixty-inch diameter pipe to handle the wastewater flows. That's what it's going to be. Today, it's about a twenty-seven inch in most places. So, this is where the Broken Arrow Creek, Lynn Lane, and County Line all come together for about just under a mile coming into the plant. The design's probably going to be later this fall by the time we're complete. We're trying to tie this one and then the one above, the County Line trunk sewer together. So, you'll have about four and a half miles of replacement of trunk sewer while we're still working on the plant with about a year, year and a half of construction. So, you're going to have a lot of construction activity down in the south part of town with the wastewater system. Altogether, it's going to be over, I think it was thirty-six million dollars with everything that we're looking at right there. Hakey Creek trunk sewer, we're actually looking at slip, slip lining, the big fifty-four inch. So, this is back over on the west side of town. This goes into the Hakey Creek lift station that goes to RMUA, their treatment process. Fifty-four inch line's about a mile or so. We're looking at slip lining that to increase its integrity and we can still get through the flows with all the improvements that we've already made to the lift station just downstream of it. Aspen Creek relief line, Mr. Spurgeon actually mentioned this in, in his comments. This is the line that we're putting in just west of Aspen. It's about a mile from Tucson Hundred Twenty-first to Florence Hundred Eleventh. It'll take two lift stations offline that will now go gravity feed. One of the lift stations runs almost constantly. It's almost, that's how much load it has. That lift station right now on Florence pumps to Aspen, or sorry, Elm Creek. So, as Aspen Creek relief line comes online later this year, will relieve that huge load that's going to Elm Creek. So, we're balancing that out a little bit. Very good use of some funds that we had found to, to not only spur economic development, but address a lot of problems that we are having. Onita Road Lift Station. So, this is Onita and Kenosha. It's complete. Substantial completion's already taken place. We're already using it right now and we've just got to finalize a few items with it. Two-on-Ninth Street Lift Station and forced main, I believe I left the word main off. This is actually under construction right now. This will be basically just east of the Turnpike and south of Kenosha. It's about seven, no, it's about nine thousand feet of forced main that will redirect a lot of undersized lift station right now, redirect the flow to, towards the County Line trunk sewer and go to Lynn Lane. This has to be online by the time Timber Ridge opens up in August. So, the engineering staff, along with utilities, got very creative to figure out how to get this thing working. Right now, it's under construction and moving along real well. SCADA, this is a control system that will allow us to look at all of our lift stations. Right now, we can't and actually booster pump stations too, all of them. Right now, we can't. We have to go visit them daily. We have, we have crews going out and looking at them. Now, with this control system, we can monitor that and be much more efficient and much more effective. This is ready to go to construction right now. Last couple of slides are on RMUA. This is a flow equalization basin. We just completed one at the Hakey Creek plant a couple of years ago to twelve million gallons is what it can hold. In the last couple of rains, not this past one, but when we had the weekend back-to-back, one of them, one of them, the only one, had the twelve million, actually overflowed. It bypassed. It was that full. We had twelve million gallons of diluted wastewater in it, but it's still a bypass. We're under construction right now with an additional one that will bring our total up to thirty million gallons of storage at the plant. So, this one's already in construction. It'll take the better part of this year to complete it. Last few items, Hakey Creek forced main. Right now, we have a twenty-four inch and I believe a thirty-inch forced main that go to the Hakey Creek from the lift station in Hakey Creek Park. It pumps south about three, three and a half miles to the plant. We're getting ready to upsize one of the forced mains to a thirty-six inch, brand-new forced main. That will start this summer. We have our funds in place, design's complete. We have right-of-way. Tulsa will get their money here in the next month or two and then we'll go to construction with this one. Right down Garnet, basically. Hakey Creek Lift Station, I just talked about that one. We basically have completed an odor control, a screening with that lift station and now we'll go into future phases with that. Grit removal rehabilitation, that's the last few items. Really, the last three are all at the plant and they're just starting design. So, each one of them are just getting into contract and starting the design process. Also, we have about seventy million dollars from the design and construction just really has started just over a year ago and will be in construction on most of that by the end of, or by the end of this year. So, you know, right now, I applaud everybody that's been involved on addressing this, engineering, utilities, legals helped us, finance, Tom Caldwell doesn't like to see us coming because he knows what, what's next. I need, I need millions. But that's where we are. We've made a lot of progress and it's just been a team effort. So, I'll be happy to answer any questions that you may have.
Any questions of Kenny?
Yeah, I had somebody ask me actually this last weekend on the Lynn Lane Sewer Treatment Plant on, on percentage-wise, how successful you think that will be in reducing the odor?
I think it's going to be very successful. We've got a few problems out there, but the biggest part of that success is kind of twofold. We're moving the headworks, which is open to the atmosphere right now. We're moving it south away from the property line and enclosing it. So, that's huge right there. And then the other part is, there's a screw pump which lifts up and takes it into the process. That's being done away with. So, we have two open air processes that are creating a whole lot of the problem. And then the other project, the digester is going to help as well.
The one thing I want to mention in council is that Kenny and I talked that once we award the contract for the improvements down there, we're going to actually go out to the Home owners Association meeting and have a, have a discussion and just, you know, eyeball to eyeball, tell them what's going on and then keep them informed because, because it is one of those projects that could take approximately eighteen months.
Yeah.
So, it's something we've been talking about, so we just want to make sure that they hear from us. So, Anthony will be coordinating that, but we'll let the council know in case you'd like to come out.
That's something we've been working on for years as far as that issue, so.
Thank you.
Thanks.
Okay, we have no general authority business, no executive session.
Make a motion adjourn.
Second.
Question second, roll call, please.
Wimpy?
Yes.
Parks?
Yes.
Lester?
Yes.
Udi?
Yes.
Thurman?
Yes. I'll call the Broken Arrow Economic Development Authority Meeting to Order. Roll call, please.
Udi, I mean, excuse me. Wimpy?
Here.
No, here. Parks?
Here.
Lester?
Here.
Udi?
Here.
Thurman?
Here. Consideration of the consent agenda, there's only one item. Does, we need it removed?
Move for approval?
Second.
Motion second, roll call, please.
Wimpy?
Yes.
Parks?
Yes.
Lester?
Yes.
Udi?
Yes.
Thurman?
Yes. One more motion.
Move for adjourn.
Second.
Question second, roll call, please.
Wimpy?
Yes.
Parks?
Yes.
Lester?
Yes.
Udi?
Yes.
And Thurman?
Yes. We're back in regular Broken Arrow City Council meeting and I would entertain a motion to go into, for a brief recess to go into executive session and clear the room.
Move. Second.
Question second, roll call, please.
Wimpy?
Yes.
Parks?
Yes.
Lester?
Yes.
Udi?
Yes.
And Thurman?
Yes. We're back in regular Broken Arrow City Council meeting and I would entertain a motion to go into, for a brief recess to go into executive session and clear the room.
Move. Second.
Question second, roll call, please.
Wimpy?
Yes.
Parks?
Yes.
Lester?
Yes.
Udi?
Yes.
Thurman?